Fire in the fireplace, everybody, everyone was used to it, everyone loved it. Put on their boots, tramp down to the neighbor's house.
I had to deal with cattle all my life and man, it was no made, twice as much work.
Yeah, yeah. And I always thought about that too, all the, the cattle farmers that are in the mountain areas and the sheep farmers. I always said, man, that's like a, that's a rough, that's a rough place to farm. Such a hard, but so that little, they had like a full editorial staff, so it was a pretty decent newspaper. But everybody I knew, that's the only first section they tried to, every time I mentioned her, because they said.
Fortunately, I got out of picking the tree.
Nobody missed a funeral, nobody missed a funeral.
It's a great tradition for you to do it with kids.
That was, then I got to the point that I.
Yeah, that did.
That lasted a day.
It did, it lasted a day.
Junior senior.
And he actually decorated it.
Trip all the time.
Oh my God.
And we tried, tried riding the bus, it took nine hours to get from.
Cause you go up and around.
Yeah, well she had to go to Charleston and then it came, and I had to meet her, I had to meet her at Gum Springs to get her off the bus. That way you could go to Rex. I said, I'm gonna get you a car.
Well, I don't want to.
I had four daughters. She was my three, so I had bought a car for the first one and then.
I used to do that.
Keep passing it around.
Yeah, they all four of them used this little old Toyota Corolla.
That's a rough drive. I had a rough drive, I've made that drive so many times, I was just in Charleston in West Virginia like most of last week.
Yeah, well, well, poker's just past charge. Sis, sis, girl.
You know the mascot for their high school?
Gosh, poker's, I, I got a purple dot hat.
Watch me.
Yeah, yeah, and so, but, but, what's it, what's it?
Hi, hey Jen, how are you? Good, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Sorry, we're in a deep discussion right off the bat here.
I know, good stuff, good stuff.
You guys all set?
Talking of west baggage.
What'd you say?
West baggage, I got a daughter lives in West Virginia, she, she lived there days ago.
Oh, yeah. He and his daughter went to school in the next little tiny town over from where we live.
Is your other daughter up here, did she move up here from North Carolina, the other one?
I haven't got the house built yet.
Oh, details, yeah.
She came up, she came up for Thanksgiving, she'll be back up for Christmas and then.
Good.
But I gotta get my mess together, I am, I'm too old to start a new house.
I heard that.
I don't know what age is right to start a new house.
Yeah, you got that right.
But anyhow, that's what we're gonna do, get her up here.
Does Gwen want her up here?
Huh?
Does Gwen want her up here?
Yeah, I was not living with her.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, where would you build the house, so it's like you're here, Gwen's here, would it be?
On, toward Clayville from my eyes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we've already, I've already planted it off and got the dream field, uh, well, got it perked, but I haven't dug a dream field yet, no.
You're on it.
Oh, yeah, well. Hey, I found there's some things about our county ordinance that I said, you know, I said, I said he had to make these orders and man, I gotta jump through all these damn hoops. What the heck is the deal going on?
We gotta work on this, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of bad, I, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, like certain things, like even with business, you go and you do it, you're like, what the hell was this?
Wait a minute, I approved that.
Yeah, you were like, I approved that, yeah.
I was okay with it at the time.
Sounded good.
Sounded good at the time.
We're gonna hold under the fire and then when it's you paying, you're like, holy cow.
Well, it's gonna get humbled now.
Yeah, it is, it is, so, good stuff.
The town of Asheville did it to me a couple, three months ago.
Seven o'clock.
Official clock up there says seven.
Yep, let's do it.
I now call the Powhatan County Planning Commission meeting to order, Mr. Van Gelder will lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction in our collective effort to be good stewards of the public trust, to make fair and wise decisions, and keep Powhatan a wonderful place to live and work. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Uh, we need to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the October fourth meeting, I believe there is one amendment.
On page six, uh, the private road approval, the draft minutes stated the motion was for denial, it was for approval.
Okay, any other amendments?
Uh, question.
Sure.
Uh, sixteen oh seven A Z was to be deferred until our next scheduled planning commission meeting, which is here. Where's that going?
The, that was the R C code amendment.
That's here.
Um, we, so I had said I would try and find the business in question that was interested in that code amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Have talked with everybody I can, can't find what business that may have been that had any interest. So with no business interested, uh, coming forward wanting that code amendment, um, that hadn't brought it back yet again until we can.
Do we have to do anything if it's deferred?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear which one it was.
That was the R C amendment.
The R C amendment was deferred until this meeting, and it's not on the agenda, so the question is, and you just turned Brett's, what, do we have to do anything? Can it just float? I, I don't know the answer to that.
And Tom's not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
It was for the next, it was scheduled for the, we postponed it to the next.
To this meeting.
Regular meeting, right?
Yeah, so this one.
This meeting, so, it's just a question of.
We can postpone it again.
Well.
Or whatever.
It's just, it's, it's just a question of what do we need to do if anything, I don't care.
Yeah, and if he couldn't find the business, how do we close that out?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Why, why don't we say we're gonna, you want to defer it to the next one, or just say we're gonna handle the next meeting and make a?
Well, being we didn't advertise, I don't even think we would have to, correct?
Yeah, you wouldn't have to, I think, um, I'll, I don't think you give any action tonight, and I'll confer with Tom, and then we can.
And bring it, tell us what we need to do next now.
Yeah.
After we messed up, we won't do it again?
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Any others? Okay, if not, I move we approve the October fourth meeting minutes as amended, any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Um, administrative items, we need to see if we need to postpone or amend the agenda, which I have several amendments. If you all don't have any, I will proceed with those. Ms., Brett would like to discuss moving our January meeting, I would like to put that under administrative items. I would also like to add our remote policy, uh, discussion that we chatted about under administrative items. And that is it, I will need to move, um, under the public hearing, I think, I believe to, I need to move the, um, one amendment, um, back on the agenda, but I think I will do that at that time, correct? Okay, that sounds good. Alrighty, um, that being said, would you like to talk about the January meeting?
Yeah, um, so our previously scheduled, uh, January meeting, I believe falls on January third. Um, I'm gonna be out of the country, uh, my family were taking a trip to India from Christmas Day through January tenth. So I, I won't be here then. If you all want to have it on that date, and I can arrange for Mr. Howland or somebody to attend his staff. If not, I'll be back, um, and we could hold it on January seventeenth, that's the, the next Tuesday after I return. So far, it looks like for that meeting, um, it will probably just be a presentation on the C I P. You won't actually review or make a recommendation until the February meeting, but it'll just be the.
Presentation?
County administrator's presentation of it. Um, so otherwise, if you want to do it on the third, she can still present that in my absence, no problem, but if you want to move it to the seventeenth, we could also do a workshop.
Okay.
If we don't have anything else.
I would leave it on the third.
Yeah, and no other public hearings?
No, we don't have anything in the pipeline yet, so.
Cause I'm not gonna, I won't be here the seventeenth.
Okay.
Yeah, what do you prefer, do you mind, I mean, you'll kind of be piled up with stuff after being away, we can be one less thing you're piled up on your plate.
Or take us on a trip with you.
No, I said that to him, I was like, lucky guy.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, as long as, um, you all are okay not doing like a workshop or something, which that I would like to be here.
Okay.
For, but if you just want to do the C I P and whatever might come up, then, um, again, staff's ready to handle that in my absence.
Okay.
Unless something comes up where you need to be involved, then I'd like to talk about it again. I'm fine with the third, but if something comes in that needs Brett's involvement.
Alright, postpone it till the February meeting.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll keep it on the third.
Okay, second, the remote policy, I discussed with Brett, um, having a policy where we allow two public hearings, no workshops, um, allowed to call in remotely per year. Are you guys good with that?
Say again, two?
Two public hearings, no workshops per calendar year. If you're fine.
Calendar year or our year, our year and a calendar year?
I guess would be, is February to February, that's our year, so, sorry, not calendar year, planning commission year, so February to February.
February to January.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I stated before, I don't, I, I think you can listen in on a workshop and participate via phone on a workshop in that room, even if somebody put a phone on the table. Not that it's gonna necessarily ever be used, but I don't, you know, to miss a workshop, just like hear Brett's talking about going to India with his family. But if, if it were someone else and we couldn't switch that workshop, that's important, he said the very same thing, well, I'd wanna defer the meeting if it's a workshop. So if there's a limit to it, I think that's great, or whatever the, the county policy is. But if there are extenuating circumstances and it happens to be a workshop for somebody, it's my personal opinion, and I would be, I'm volunteering my opinion that it should be whatever limit you're comfortable with, but it could be anything. A workshop or a meeting, so that's just my.
So you say, are you good with the two, either workshop or meeting then, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask a question, it was originally set up with the Board of Supervisors, just the public meetings, right? Because that's an official meeting. Does it hurt for someone to call in and listen? My only problem with the workshop, to be quite honest, is that if it bogs it down, cause you don't, cause things aren't turned out, I'm talking not to you, anybody.
Sure, sure.
You know, referring to page seven or something like that, just to slow it, slow it down, I personally don't care if someone listens on a workshop, I don't know if that's part of the code, what they're talking, I think they're talking about just giving us more thought, just.
Where there's a vote.
Where's a vote and that type of thing, and then I would, I would support doing the same, what's good for the board is good for us. Workshops, I think, you know, I just, if someone wants to call in, listen, cell phone or something like that, just as long as it doesn't bog it down, that's my personal.
I agree with that.
You know, it's up to you, you know, it's, it's just as long, just being honest, just as long as we're. Go to page seven and stuff.
Efficient, yeah, efficient, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the, that's the price you, price you pay, you know, not, not being mean or anything, but I mean, that's what happens if you can't make it, you just don't, just want us to remain efficient, that's how I.
Okay.
I totally agree with that.
And I don't know, and I think that's, I would check personally if that's, I think that's what we're talking about in the code, cause we, I had talked about the workshop, and that was one of the reasons why I know.
Yeah, and we don't take any, we don't vote at our workshops, so.
So I think, I think the code is, is.
Yeah, we do have a workshop after a meeting in the house, if you.
Yeah.
So that'd be.
So I'm not sure I care.
Yes, you, you're, you are correct.
So they're pretty much packaged together.
They are packaged together, most of the time, historically they have been.
What's packaged together, what?
The workshop and the meeting, historically.
They're on the same day.
They're on the same day, so that, that is true, I mean, if you're.
It falls into that anyhow.
It does, fall a little bit into that.
To me, I think the whole concept was you're there voting in absentee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for voting, and then if it, I, I, I don't disagree with that, as long as you can listen in, you could even email feedback to people.
Right.
At least you've heard the conversation if you're, um, uh, you know, on the phone.
I think we all know.
We record those anyway, don't we?
It's possible in a public setting, so, but.
Yes. We actually don't have to record those, interestingly enough, but we do. Anyway, so are you all?
What is, what is the proposal?
Okay. How about two a year?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Two a year, two meet, should we, then we will say two meetings per year.
Which is either or.
Which is either or, is that good? Okay, any more discussion? Alright, I move we, um, amend our bylaws to allow remote, me, two remote meetings per planning commission year.
Are we going to use the language that the, uh, to amend it, are we gonna use the language that the supervisors use?
I would.
I, I would too.
That's fine.
I think it just mimics exactly what they're.
Okay, whatever, that, just, to that language.
It's good for them, it's good for us, yeah.
Okay, and, uh, any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, do you have any other administrative items?
Um, I, I guess as good, as time is, uh, any just reminder, we have the Route sixty community meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
For the Timmons study that you all saw at your workshop, um, so we'll have that from five to seven at the Hughinot Public Safety Building off Irvine Road.
Okay.
Don't need to attend, but if you're interested.
Uh, what was that, what time, four to sev, four to six?
Five, five to seven.
Five to seven, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then question, is, um, is the P D C presenting at the next Board of Supervisors meetings on the other half of Route sixty?
They are going to, um, at the board's workshop next week, on the twelfth.
On Monday, is that Monday, yeah?
Both are gonna present.
Okay.
And then the P D C, I believe, does not require any kind of board action or adoption, so they're just gonna present, if the board wants to formally adopt it in their official meeting, they can.
So they've not seen what we've seen from Barbara Jay Cox, okay?
They have copies of the plan, but they haven't gotten any kind of presentation.
And they haven't gotten a Timmons presentation yet either, so.
Is there a, where is the V dot recommendation? What we got was the, with the land use recommendation, the V dot recommendation is for no expansion, which I think is what everybody is looking for. Do, do we get, does that just go to V dot from them, or?
They, so that, and I think initially that was the plan, was just that was to satisfy V dot a request of copies, that, haven't gotten them yet, they said they would give them to us, of course, but I'll have to check back again, cause that's probably been a week since I asked for copies. So if y'all are interested, I'll, you all once I get it.
I just, I, I don't need a copy, I'd just like to know that they have done that officially.
Yep.
Not just as a presentation.
It was so, it's really nice when, uh, V dot used to send the representative to have meetings all the time.
They don't even do that for the board anymore.
I know it, but we all.
Yeah, you're right, they don't.
We always had a, we always had somebody here, if it was a problem, he, uh, he or she could have the answer for us the next, next meeting.
Yeah, and they've, um, V dot staff has a couple times asked, um, for a couple items if we want attendance, um, I think specifically these were at board meetings, and we had a couple road abandonments. So I could see if, probably, I don't, I don't know that they would wanna do every single meeting, although I could ask that, but if there's any cases, public hearings or anything that have, have all the V dot component. I could see, they seem pretty willing to attend, just more as request, I don't think they wanna come to every meeting.
Come to every meeting, yeah, blame them, like tonight.
They've spent many hours sitting out there not getting called.
I wouldn't, if I were them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, better, better things to do.
Yeah, if, if y'all in advance of any issue or anything you think we might want them here, let me know.
And we've done that, historically, I tell people, you know, the planning director, yeah, we'd prefer a feed out, we're here tonight. Um, any other administrative items?
Not for me, I'm, I'm sorry, one more.
Okay.
Two, just to let you know, um, we're working with a V C U student in the graduate program, um, to graduate, they need to prefer, prepare professional plans, that's kind of a, a study or a small area plan, something like that. So one of their students that's interested in rural development, agricultural development, um, has proposed to do agritourism plan for the county.
Nice.
Um, to look at, you know, whether our assets, how, how can we better market ourselves and grow agricultural tourism and agribusiness? So he's going to be making his proposal to the V C U faculty tomorrow for them to approve what he would like to do, um, in preparing a plan for us, and then after that, at some point, he'd like to meet with planning commission, E D A. Either officially at the meeting or individually separately, just to, again, kind of learn some more about the lay of the land and work through some recommendations.
Which school is he in?
V C U.
No, 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 which, which department, I'm sorry.
Oh, urban planning. Although, again, he has a, a very rural focus, which is good, cause a lot of those students, very, very urban.
Yeah, 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 they wanna be, yeah.
They wanna do bullet trains and all that stuff, and it's kind of refreshing that, no, he wants to work in a growing world.
That's cool.
Is it taking any of your time?
What's that?
Will it take any of your time?
Um, uh, giving a little bit of information, providing M G I S, more reviewing his recommendations and.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll be, you know, hopefully it'll be a useful exercise and useful tool for us, and, uh, that won't.
Well, we, years ago, we used to have interns come over here and actually work with the staff.
We still do that at the county, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, it, um, it has been twenty years since we've done it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'd be interested in that, it's, you know, we can use the help in some areas.
Yeah, help, yeah.
I would recommend that we be at a regular meeting or something, we can chat afterwards or something, rather than chasing us all down.
Sure. Okay.
Uh, we'll now have the public comment period, anyone wishing to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing there is no one, oh, I will close the public comment period. Uh, I don't believe we any, have any presentations, so we'll move on to our public hearings, of which we have two.
Alright, now, so the first sixteen twelve dash R E Z C, uh, cash proffer amendment request from Mr. Hotch Stettler. And this concerns one lot in Mill Station, Section B, parcel thirty eight F dash two dash fifteen, with an address of three nine nine two Lost Mill Road. And requesting to amend proffered condition number three of oh five dash nineteen rezoning case, uh, the current cash proffer per lot, um, as applied to that lot is seven thousand two hundred and thirty six. And he's requesting a reduction to one thousand eight hundred and eighty, um, and again, this, this only concerns this one lot in the development, not the development whole.
Been through this drill, any questions of staff?
I got a question, though, um, no, is the, uh, his application costs twelve hundred dollars, correct? Did we understand it?
To apply to reduce the proffer?
So, um, yeah, now, how much, I know, I know we had to advertise, so, so how much, um, is the county getting out of that? That, um, no, was, take away the cost of the advertising, what's the cost of advertising?
Couple hundred dollars, and we have to do it twice, so, you know, probably four or five hundred.
Yeah, so the rest of it is for, for staff duty.
Staff time, yeah, the mailings we do, depending on how many adjacent property owners, it can be a few mailings, but the rest, staff time, yeah.
Okay.
This is to reduce one lot, are there other lots that could have been reduced?
Yeah, my understanding is we, cause we have an issue where, um, people will come in, some of these cash proffers just doing their own. And then you end up with a subdivision where these lots have this cash proffer, these lots have this cash proffer, so we've been encouraging people to, uh, before you apply, reach out to your neighbors, see if we can get a comprehensive one, so again, we don't have this spotty. Um, my understanding is they did reach out to their neighbors, uh, and request to share in that application cost, there was no interest. So this, this one went alone, but they did request and see if anybody else would, would go along with it.
This doesn't, does this change the status of anybody else, the fact that this one's by itself?
Yeah.
They can still apply if they want to.
Yep, and if they don't, then their cash proffer would still be the seven thousand two hundred and thirty six.
Okay, um, I'm gonna same, make the same amendment or proposal that I have had before. I move the planning commission deny the, um, recommended amendment for the proffer reduction. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one, um, we need to, I might stumble through this, so bear with me. The, uh, county requests an amendment to the R U district, um, the planning commission several months ago, I guess, tabled this or put this on an indefinite deferral. Um, I need to get, um, I'm going to make a motion that we bring this back up for discussion. So I move that the planning commission brings this proposed amendment back up for discussion.
You need a vote on it.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, any comments on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, so this will actively be back on our agenda for discussion.
Alright, so the proposal on here, it's the, the same we've looked at a couple times, no change there. Um, this would be proposing to add conference or training facilities for hotel motel as a conditional use in the R U district. As you recall, the discussion we've had are the appropriateness of doing that versus, uh, rezoning to a C C or some other classification. So, uh, again, if the planning commissioner board wants to add this to R U, as staff, I'm comfortable with that, can work with the conditional use permit to approve it. At the same time, we have reached out to the applicant, well, essentially the applicant, um, since this is a county sponsored amendment, but we're talking about one property essentially that this would work for. Um, and they're not necessarily opposed to a rezoning, um, again, they're just really looking for a path forward, which a rezoning would be one. So taking it back up would just send a recommendation to the board, um, so we can close this one out. But again, staff could, could go underway.
Okay. Um, I am just gonna put my opinion, I think, um, in light of everything, adding, you know, um, uses to these districts, I think. I would recommend we deny this and just send it forward to the board and let them see what they wanna do, and when this applicant comes forward, encourage a rezoning and get that property in line with the comprehensive plan and, um, move forward with, kind of tamping down with these.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, legacy zoning, which we may see, see around for a long time, but like, adding to that doesn't make a, a lot of sense to me, so I kind of echo what you're saying too, is that I think a rezoning, at least moving in the right direction to, to what we said we wanted to do is, is the best thing to do, and especially, you know, we're not even, there's not a time consideration. That would bother me a little bit, but, so I, I would support what you said.
Jen, Mr. Walker, Mr.?
I would go in a different direction. I would like full discussion, which is what I asked for, uh, back in September, uh, when I asked for a deferral on this. There are four points that I see, and I'd like to have those discussed as part of a plan, uh, from the staff. Uh, so that all the, our job, part of our job is to make sure we flesh all of these things out. So I see four different problems with this request. The first is, how does it relate to the comprehensive plan? The second is, how does the ordinance read itself, and does this comport with the ordinance? I would tell you it does not. The ordinance says that it can be residential, or it can be limited institutional, and these are not institutional uses, but happy to listen to a different argument. This is by definition spot zoning, uh, where we're changing an ordinance just for one person. I would like to know if, if we're going to go down that route, what process are we going to use to choose who the lucky person is? Because I would suggest that a normal citizen wouldn't get this type of treatment. So what process are we gonna use to take a look at these kinds of exceptions to, to craft something just for one individual entity? And, uh, then the other, the last piece, the fourth piece, is we have other vehicles available, what vehicles, which are one of which is rezoning? Why haven't we chosen that, why isn't that our recommendation? Staff, you, you made a recommendation by staff that, uh, we, uh, approved the R U, so I, I would like a deferral, not to try and slow this thing down, but to get full information out there, because this is what the board should be concerning, considering and looking at.
Um, I agree, can't we put, you're exactly what you said in our rec, if we do, it sounds like.
I would like a full discussion of why staff recommends those, given these.
Recommends what?
They're recommending approval of, this recommends approval of the R U. The, the additions to the R U, and I would like to know why, uh, over the four different areas, they recommend that. Doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, it doesn't meet the definition of the ordinance, it is spot zoning. And it would have other vehicles available, so the question is, why did they choose not to use any of those, how do you get past those hurdles?
Could we not deny it and, and have them?
I.
Discuss.
You, you can deny, I'm just telling you what I would like to see, I think it's important in situations like this, where we, in my estimation, take an ordinance like this and twist it. That there's a full disclosure of what's going on, I'm, I've listened time and time again to people telling me, well, I don't know why we did that. I think it's time to start writing some of this down, and to have people looking at the impact of what they're asking for.
Who is writing down what impact?
Well, the board has got to look at it and gotta make a decision. We're being used as a gateway simply to blow it through the, blow it procedurally through this body, so that it can go there and get approved. That's where it's headed. I would like a full dis- discussion and disclosure of what's happening and why it's happening. It felt, it felt, it felt like that.
No, I hear you.
I, no, I hear, I hear exactly what you're.
I will support the, you know, the.
Denial.
But this is, this is what I'd like, and that's the reason why.
My question to you is though, if we do the denial, say we do the denial.
Can we do that now?
Can we do that now, and you put, we put exactly why, what you just said.
No, this is, this is Brett's job, this is staff's job, it's not our job.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, can, are you prepared to do that now?
Discuss it, sure, we can, we can discuss.
I don't know if that's satisfactory to you, but.
I would, no, I would like a written public record, okay, based on, this really doesn't say much, it just says, look, this is, this is what independence wants, so let's do it, I mean, that's really all it says.
Yeah, and so.
I think it was a little bit, I think it's an easy fix for something that, you know, requires a resign, so that's why I'm against it.
Well, I, I, I would like the deferral to have that done, if y'all don't support that, I understand that, and?
Is the board wanting to look at this, how soon?
There's no rush, I don't think, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think it's pressing.
Yeah, so, and, and I'll say a few things, one, um, when it was September, or whenever, I was prepared to discuss the merits and the pros and cons, that was when it was deferred indefinitely, um, so we couldn't have that discussion at that time. I haven't heard anything from the board that this is already lined up for approval, and that the planning commission is being used, uh, in any way, if that was the case, we wouldn't be having this discussion now. Cause as I've mentioned, I think, before, uh, by state code, if we don't take action tonight, it automatically defaults to approval of the planning commission, so if the goal.
I don't know that that's true.
It's, it's true, I, I'm conferred with the county attorney.
That is with a rezoning application, I don't know that it is in terms of changing our ordinances.
It, it also applies to a zoning ordinance tax amendment. It, it also applies to a zoning ordinance tax amendment, um.
If we did a deferral, that would.
What if we did a deferral? Could we do a deferral?
You could do a deferral, um, and, so my point is that technically, I believe it's December eighteenth, whether you defer or not. Your recommendation is approval if the board chose to say, we're gonna take it up. I don't think they're gonna do that, because again, I don't think they're teeing this thing up to approve it, and don't care what you think, I don't think that's the case at all. So if you wanna defer it, that's fine, again, I just mentioned that, that state code does have that timeline, that it defaults to approval, again, maybe a good taste of the.
When did the timeline start?
September.
From when the board makes their, uh, recommendation, or when the board requests it be.
No, 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 it was at time limit, when did, when did it start?
When the board made their motion to have the planning commission make a recommendation.
And when was that?
Uh, August fifteenth, at their workshop.
Oh, we had six months.
No, it's, uh, one hundred days.
Hundred days, when, when it comes from that way.
Yeah.
When's the hundred days up again, I'm starting getting lost.
I believe it's December eighteenth.
Okay. So, long story short, if we defer it, that's fine, unless the board says, I wanted to hear what the planning commission said, then it would look like an automatic approval.
Which, and, which, again, I.
I doubt they're gonna do that.
I don't think that's gonna happen, and if it did, I would not say the planning commission recommended approval, I would say statutory time limits ran out, but there was some real concern and discussion to get.
So we can defer it.
Yeah, I, I think, as staff, I'm okay with that.
And what would the deliverable be?
Next meeting?
No, no, what would be, you wanted, you wanted some, what, what are you asking staff to do?
I'm asking.
What's the deliverable?
That's my question too, so, if we're looking at what's best for the county, we've had a discussion about the RU needing to kind of.
Go away.
You know, certain places, the RU's not working, and we know that that's an issue in our zoning. We saw the Timmons report that reviewed different districts, so sort of some of that's in motion. And then there's just been this discussion about some of these uses and where they land, never mind independence, that particular landowner.
Timmons was RC though.
Yeah, RC. So as all these conversations have been swirling around, for me, it's sort of, what's our role in figuring out what's best for the county? It sounds like, Bill, you want some documentation up to this point before we make a decision, or do you want, in that documentation, our feedback regarding these zoning changes in general, or this one particular use in law?
I was looking for, not ours, the basis for staff's recommendation for approval of this. Okay, and I see four areas that I look at it, that they need to address.
So this sounds like it's a, it's a, it's a deferral for staff to itemize for you four areas, for us to, to hear that justi- discuss that justification again in a month, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And, and I'll say too, um, you know, if, if that's the will of the commission, I will certainly bring that information together. Staff time is limited and precious, and I'm hesitant to compile a report, which seems kind of like a useless exercise for this discussion. If it's a genuine discussion and the commission wants that, certainly, I'll work on it, otherwise, we have a, a lot going on in our department that needs attention.
I just think it's important that we have clear public record of what's being recommended and why, and why we are disagreeing with it or approving. Can we get?
I think we could get there tonight, if we spend some time, I, I do, I, I think we could get there tonight. I would rather, and I hear where you're coming from, I'd rather him put the effort toward some of the comp plan stuff, that's.
And, and perhaps going forward to. Hang on, hang on a second, hang on.
Yeah.
I'm not dying on this sword, okay?
Yeah.
This is what I'd like, if y'all would rather go ahead, and you wanted to deny it, okay? You wanna have a vote on that, rather than what I wanna do, I'm fine with that. I just wanted you to know, I think it's important in cases like this, where we are really messing, and with my feeling, we're really messing with a basic ordinance. That we're, if it's gonna be recommended by staff, that they should be able to lay out their case very clearly, and that's not happening, and it hadn't been happening in the past, and I think it needs to happen. So that we have the kind of discussion.
I think to that, to that extent, maybe going forward.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, is I, I, you know, Bill, I, I agree, um, you know, this one I had to think somewhat too, that this was not one that I, exactly, I kinda picked it up.
Yeah, you, it's fair, that's correct, exactly.
Let me speak to that, I mean, and, and that, that was inherited, let's, think, go forward to your point.
If, if, if you all weren't comfortable with that, I will support your.
Yeah, so I, I would say that, I, I agree with Mr. Cox there, that, you know, if I was to bring another code amendment for to you, um, those four points and any others that you raise, I would expect those to be justified in here. So again, I wouldn't expect that this is, again, how each one will go, so if that gives any comfort level, I don't know, but.
I prefer we move this forward tonight with a denial, with, um, Mr. Cox's, uh, his four bullet points noted.
We'd like a little more meat going forward for a recommendation.
Yes, in the, um, report to the Board of Supervisors, and say that the planning commission discussed that and had.
What was the impetus of this particular? It was your district, right?
Yes.
Was it David?
An impetus of what, the?
Prompted us, ask request for change.
Yeah, to add this, no words.
None, I know, David does.
I, I think, I wasn't here, but my understanding was, um, independence has an interest in possibly, you know, expanding some of their uses there to diversify. There was an article in Planning Magazine, I think last month, about nationally how much difficulty golf courses are having.
Mm-hmm.
And they're kinda having to diversify to, to survive. So I think independence was interested in diversifying, uh, met with, met with March Altman, um, who I believe he proposed it, took it to the board at the workshop and said, this is staff's thought, and the board kinda said, sure, you know, let's take a look at it, so.
It's like preemptive work on behalf of the county.
Yeah, but to, but to Bill's point, it needs to follow these tendencies, he talked about ordinance, comp plan.
Yeah.
Spot zoning, I agree, there has to be meat and justification for it, rather than the easy button.
Just any, the easy button, which, it, the easy button was pushed.
Yeah.
Yeah, no doubt, and, and, you know, we discussed that a little bit after that.
Well, it'll be spot zoning if we, if we do something, uh, outside of the RU district for, for that.
Say that again?
It would be a spot zoning, as we using the term, no words, would we zone the Independence Golf Club and all to get them a conference room, conference salon?
But he's not, he's not proposed a project to us with that, so I think that the county attorney would have to advise us on what that looks like. You can zone an area because you've got plans in the county, and not necessarily have that be a spot zoning case that comes before. He's not requested that from us, it's, it's being initiated, but, yeah, this point about sort of transparency and tracking, I think is valid.
I do.
I would add to that.
And, and I think in the past, we want solid recommendations with feedback, just so you know.
Yes, we have had issues.
And so that, hey, these are justifications, and how is it, how is it, how is it coincide or mesh with
Yeah.
these different concerns going forward, 'cause then maybe next time we will want more discussion. That's my thought.
All right.
Well, if the board is in no hurry, I, I'll support the recommendation, I'll.
Okay. All right, I move the planning commission deny the proposed amendment to the RU district. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to our workshop.
Does it here?
Should stay here today?
Yeah, we can stay here.
That's cool.
All right, good. You wanna stay here, is that good?
Up, up here, I've got the maps and things.
All right, let's go.
I was just kidding.
Good, I wanna go wash my arms again.
What?
Go wash my arms.
Please, your ambiance.
It's just over the top. I was telling, no, I had this little sample bottle of perfume I got, and it dripped all down my arms, I feel like I stink. Feels like you do stink, so.
At least it's perfume, not, you know, like, skunk or something, it's probably by a skunk or something, yeah. Oh, I know, and they're stretching the area, we've got them, I'm just waiting for the day I can tull down those stuff.
Wait until winter.
It will happen, I've noticed my arms, for my cooking and my cookies. Neither, they're very different colors. Very distinct, it just stinks, go a little.